First order of business would be the invocation Pastor Kelly, I don't see Pastor here. So since Pastor's not here, we're gonna ask Councilmember Broadway if he'll do our invocation, and then we'll do the pledge of allegiance, if you would please.
Last prayer. Our dear heavenly Father, we thank you for all the bounties. And we thank you for the rain that has finally come. And we thank you for all that you have given this city, and all the bounty that this city has. Our dear Lord, we pray today to give us guidance. Give us guidance at the national level, the state level, county level, and right here in the city of Goldsboro. Help us to do the right things, in this we pray. Heavenly Father, help us today, and keep us safe, in his name we pray, amen.
Thank you, sir.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic by which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, with that, we'll have roll call?
Mayor Allen.
Here?
Mayor Fretton Brown.
Here.
Here.
Number Foster.
Present. Yeah. Here. Alright, we're all here. Next, we have the approval of a work session and regular meeting of May twentieth, two thousand nineteen, the minutes.
Move to adopt.
Is there a second? Second. Any discussion? All favors right hand? Opposed likewise? Minutes are approved. Next, we have the National Honeybee Day proclamation. Is anybody here for the, ah, okay, I'm gonna read it real quick, and then we'll have you come up, okay? National Honeybee Day proclamation. The honeybee is critical to the process of pollination, with one bite of food and three benefiting directly from honeybee pollination. Honeybees are essential for production of more than ninety food crops, and bee pollination results for fifteen billion in added crop value. Honeybees face a significant threat from colony collapse disorder, which has been linked with disease pathogens, parasites, environmental stress, loss of natural habitat, and inappropriate use of pesticides, herbicides, among other factors. The honeybee works together with other bees and the bee colony as a single vibrant living organism that helps to maintain a healthy ecosystem. The U.S. Department of Agriculture is working in cooperation with federal agencies, universities, industry, and additional parts to find ways to improve honeybee health and habitat. Therefore, to further the awareness of the honeybee and its importance to agriculture, the food system, and the economy, I, Chuck Allen, Mayor of City of Goldsboro, do hereby proclaim August seventeenth, two thousand nineteen, as National Honeybee Day in Goldsboro, North Carolina, and encourage the citizens of Goldsboro to celebrate the honeybee and its many contributions with appropriate observances and activities. Offer that for adoption. Second. Any discussion? All favors say aye, or raise your hand? Opposed likewise? Alright, so we got that passed, and do you like to say anything?
Just everyone's invited.
Come on up to the podium here.
Just invite everyone to come out on August the seventeenth to our National Honeybee Day. We have activities for children. We have bee-friendly activities going on, things where you can look at Observation Hive and actually look at how the honeybees actually work within the hive. We actually take a frame out of a living hive and put it in an open environment where you'll be able to see. It's an enclosed, open environment where you'll be able to see how the honeybees actually work within their hives and do their pollination and everything, so we're looking real forward to it.
Is that at Wayne's Borough Park now?
Yes, sir, it is, Wayne's Borough Park. And it's from nine o'clock till three o'clock.
Nine o'clock, August seventeenth.
On August seventeenth.
Nine o'clock to three o'clock.
Yes, sir.
Well, I will tell you this, I used to have bees, and bees are a lot harder than you people think they are.
They are.
And when mine, my, I was far flooded, and my bees went down the river to flood, I let them stay down the river. They're just a whore. But man, that's some good honey.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, that brings us to our public comment period. This is the time for anybody can speak for up to three minutes on anything to do with the city of Goldsboro. No politic and no campaigning, no attacking others, things like that. Does anybody like to speak for up to three minutes? Anybody like to speak? Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening.
You know, I have a problem with the cleanliness of this city.
Yes, sir.
Fourth of July, during the Fourth of July, I had the pleasure of visiting with my brother in South Carolina. And we took a trip to a store, I think it was, and along the highway, there was a sign, a litter sign, anti-litter sign. And I didn't get a chance to take a picture of that sign, but I made a facsimile for the city of Goldsboro. It was very, very interesting. The sign, the facsimile I have here says, well, what they did is they said if anyone caught littering, they'd receive three, they had three possibilities. They would get a financial fine, ten days in detention, or ten hours of supervised litter cleanup. Now, the, you notice there that the one hundred dollar fine, well, their fine was one thousand dollars. So, this is just a facsimile of the sign that I saw, and I'm hoping that the city of Goldsboro would consider something like this. It's a shame that this city looks the way it does.
I totally agree. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak? Seeing no one else, we're gonna close the public comment period, and we're gonna move to our consent agenda. And we're gonna start with item D, and just for the audience or anybody watching, we had some closed session items in our regular five o'clock briefing, so we didn't get to the consent agenda. So we're gonna be going through these individually, which we don't normally do up here. And the first one is item D, bid award for the paving Greenway in Stony Creek Park.
Yes, sir. Good evening again, everybody. I have before you this evening is the bid award for paving the Greenway in Stony Creek Park. Just to give you a little bit of background, the city of Goldsboro was awarded a Go Wango grant in amount of forty thousand dollars. The city of Goldsboro matched the grant with forty thousand dollars, so for that combined eighty thousand dollars is to be used specifically for paving the Greenway in Stony Creek Park and the Dillard Mill Minewell Park Track. The city of Goldsboro requested informal bids for paving the Greenway in Stony Creek Park, and the scope of the project included two options. Option one was paving a ten-foot wide greenway, and option two was paving an eight-foot wide greenway. On July twenty-fifth, the informal bids were opened with Barn Hill Contracting Company being the low bidder. Park's recreation staff reviewed each bid proposal and recommended Barn Hill Contracting Company for option one. Funding is available to cover the total bid amount of forty thousand two hundred and eighty-three dollars, and the bid tabulation should be included with your packet where you can see what the other bids were. So, the recommendation is, by motion, adopt the attached resolution authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute a contract in the amount of forty thousand two hundred and eighty-three dollars with Barn Hill Contracting Company to construct the Greenway in Stony Creek Park.
Any questions from Felicia? Thanks, Felicia. Item E is two thousand eighteen street paving improvements, Marty?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. We have the contract award for the two thousand eighteen street paving improvements project, formal bid number two thousand nineteen dash zero zero three. On Wednesday, July, or excuse me, June fifth, two thousand nineteen, we received five sealed bids, those are listed on the agenda item. After reviewing the replacement of utilities, staff has decided to re-engineer the project to reduce costs and re-advertise the project at a latter date with a different scope of work. So instead of awarding this contract, staff is recommending rejecting all of the bids.
I think, Katia Lawrence, all our, all our recommendation here is that the by motion adopt the resolution authorizing the council to execute a contract. Since he has changed that, is, do we need to take it off the consent agenda and vote on it individually, I assume?
Yeah, as a result of that change.
Okay. Can I have a motion to remove item E off the consent agenda and vote on it individually? As a result of Marty's thing? Okay. Is there a second? Any discussion? All favors raise your right hand? Okay, so we're gonna move that off the consent agenda and vote individually, and then we'll, once you get it reworked, we'll bring it back up. Alright, item F is the city personnel policy revision, human resource?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council.
Good evening.
You should have in your packet a revised, a revised anti-harassment policy. The city of Goldsboro's personnel policy was last revised on December first, two thousand seventeen. The current policy does not address some of the more recent policy issues that has, that has been encountered regarding harassment in the workplace. As advised by legal counsel and a recommendation of Human Resources Director, it has been determined that the current harassment policy is in need of revision as outlawed, as outlined by the U.S. Equal Employment Opportunity Commission, better known as EELC. All city employees will be trained on the newly revised anti-harasser policy, and the policy will be made available on the city's internet, intranet for future reference. The policy will also be published on the city's website for reference by non-city employees, affiliates of the city, and vendors. The affected article and section is attached for your review. A revision will be made to the personnel policy upon approval of the attached document. It is recommended that the city council by motion approve the attached revised section of the personnel policy as requested. The revision shall become effective immediately. More specifically, just to go over a couple of the changes. The definition of the policy has been expanded to become in compliance with the federal EELC policy, and that would include, for protected classes, those with genetic information, marital status, sexual orientation, gender identity, or gender expression. So, in a nutshell, it's just illegal to discriminate on any, any one of those protected classes, and our policy did not include those revisions. Also, we expanded on the definition of who's covered under the policy, as well as the definition of harassment, hostile work environment, retaliation, and sexual harassment. So they have just been expanded upon, so we will have a more detailed explanation of what, what those consist of. If anyone has any questions, please feel free to contact me in the H.R. office, or you can visit the EELC website at eelc.gov, or visit the, or make a phone call to their district area office in Charlotte. Any questions?
Any questions?
I would just like to table this so we can have time to look over, look over the information she just gave us as well, to compare the changes and just everything from the EELC side to this. Look at, kinda sorta, while we're making these changes, make sure we're making appropriate changes. And it's also, you know, some different things that I would like to add. I mean, it might not fall under exactly harassment, but I believe when, when, when things of racial issues come into play, that can be deemed as harassment too. And I've gotten several phone calls over the years I've been here, and I've gotten a lot recently over a lot of, you know, racial slurs and a lot of racial issues going on. They, they all said they've spoken with you about those issues. I don't know if they have or haven't, but I'm just saying what they said to me. But I would like to see, you know, that looked at as well, because.
Well, if you look at the, the policy definition, it does include, federal policy guidelines includes race, color, gender, religion, national origin, age, disability, and genetic.
I just wanna make sure that we addressing that, because I think a lot of this, you know, we've had some issues in the past, public works, just all over the place. So I wanna take a look at that to make sure we have some strict guidelines on that, zero tolerance policy as well. So, I'd like to table this until our next meeting.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All favors raise your right hand? Opposed likewise? Okay, so we'll table this until next week and bring it back up for a vote. No doubt?
Yes.
We are table it, but I want to let you know that I did read this, and I think it's a very well-written document.
Thank you. It is a template that's taken directly off of the EELC website, so it's what they recommend for employers to have. So only thing we did was pretty much plug in our information and what we wanted to make sure was enforced.
Alright, thank you, member. Item G is the resolution two thousand nineteen urgent repair program.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Item G involves our two thousand nineteen urgent repair program. The city council, the city of Goldsboro, applied for a grant in January of two thousand nineteen for funding through the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency, through their North Carolina Housing Trust Fund for the two thousand nineteen urban urgent repair program in the amount of a hundred thousand dollars. This grant is to be in conjunction, is used in conjunction with the city's Community Development Block Grant Program. North Carolina Housing Finance Association has awarded the city for the two thousand nineteen urgent repair program amount of one hundred thousand dollars to assist twelve eligible very low and low-income homeowners with urgent repairs up to ten thousand dollars per home for mental displacement, which poses an imminent threat to their life and/or safety. No matching funds are required of the city of Goldsboro in conjunction with this program. This is very similar to the two thousand seventeen program that, grant that we received, other than the amount went from eight thousand to ten thousand dollars is the cap that we can spend. By motion, adopt the attached resolution number one approving the urgent repair program nineteen assistance, procurement, and dispersment policies to conduct the urgent repair program in conjunction with our city's CDBG program. Number two, authorize the mayor, city clerk to sign the assistance, procurement, and dispersment policies. And number three, authorize the mayor, city clerk to accept and sign a contract with the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency in the amount of a hundred thousand dollars.
Any questions?
Yes, Randy, when is the start date for the applications, and when is the end date for applications?
We attentively had planned for around October to be that date. We'll advertise it in accordance with the policy we're adopting here. It'll be put in the newspaper, government buildings, various locations. Has an exact date been established, and once we, if council adopts this tonight, we'll set that timeframe. A general timeframe would be with applications being due back around October. Then we would go through the process of having the applications reviewed, going through and doing the cost estimates, and the inspections of the property, putting it out for bid with probably awards coming back in January.
One other quick question. Initially, if someone has gotten this grant before in the past, and they still qualify as far as, you know, being a low-income individual in that criteria, are they still eligible as well if they have some needs in place?
I don't believe they are if they received this exact program in the past, but I can verify that.
Okay, okay, great.
Because it actually, there is language in the document that says if you are part of the urban repair two thousand nineteen program, you're, you can't do another one, but I don't know if that means for a year, but I do believe it disqualifies you if you've received it in, in prior years. But I can verify that.
Well, some of these homeowners get assistance when it comes to the application process as well, because some people, you know, they have a problem with filling out their applications.
If they have problems with the application process, we'll be more than willing to help them. We don't want that to be a barrier for them being able to apply the money and get the money, because once again, it is for imminent repairs that are a hazard to their property and living there. It could cause them to be, have to relocate or move somewhere else.
Thank you.
Any more questions? Thank you, Randy. Next, we have the item H, Z fourteen, Mary Sue Fallon.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Item H is Z fourteen nineteen, Mary Sue Fallon. The property is located on the east side of Fallon Boulevard between North Berkeley Boulevard and Central Heights Road. The applicant is requesting a zoning change of the property from R six C.D., our conditional district, to general business. The property is currently vacant and undeveloped. On Monday, June second of two thousand and three, Goldsboro City Council approved a rezoning change for the subject property from neighborhood business to R six residential conditional district. The subject property, along with the surrounding tracts, was part of a combination rezoning for the construction of three hundred and twelve apartment units. Once approved, the developer chose to build two hundred and sixty-four apartments in lieu of the three hundred and twelve, and forfeited his option to purchase subject property. To the surrounding zoning to the north, you have R six conditional district and shopping center. To the south, neighborhood business. To the east, R M eight, and to the west, general business and shopping center. The city's comprehensive land use plan recommends high-density residential development for the property. City sewer is available to serve the property, and the subject is locate, our subject area is located in the special flood hazard area, which is the hundred-year flood plain. The subject property has frontage along Fallon Boulevard, which will be extended from Berkeley Boulevard to Central Heights Road by the North Carolina Department of Transportation. These improvements are all part of the overall project to realign Central Heights Road and Royal Avenue at Berkeley Boulevard. These improvements are scheduled to begin construction in July of two thousand twenty, with a construction duration of twenty-four months. Currently, there are no plans for development of the property, and the applicant believes the marketability of the property would be enhanced if rezoned to general business. At the public hearing held on July fifteenth, no one spoke for or against the request, and the planning commission at their meeting held on July twenty-ninth recommended approval of the change of zone requests with development plan approval required separately. It is recommended by motion to accept the recommendation of the planning commission and adopt an ordinance changing the zoning for the property from R six C.D. to general business with development plan approval required separately. And while not entirely compliant with the recommendation of the city's adopted comprehensive land use plan, the proposed rezoning would be compatible with the surrounding shopping center and general business zoning. Any questions?
Alright, I guess Jeffrey, move on to item I.
Item I is essentially the exact same location as item H I just presented, except the property is just to the south of item H's property. This property is currently zoned neighborhood business, and the applicant is requesting rezoning to general business. The property is currently vacant and undeveloped. And again, the comprehensive land use plan for this property recommends commercial development. As you can see here, and again, city water and sewer are available to serve the property. The subject property is also located in the hundred-year flood plain. And again, the property owner is asking for the property to be rezoned and believes that the marketability of the property would be enhanced if rezoned to general business. At the public hearing held on July the fifteenth, no one spoke for or against, and the planning commission at their meeting held on July twenty-ninth recommended approval of the rezoning with development plan approval required separately. It is recommended by motion to accept the recommendation of the planning commission and adopt an ordinance changing the zoning of the property from neighborhood business to general business.
Any questions? Alright, item J is site thirteen dash nineteen, Adams County, site for plan modifications?
Yes, this property is located on the south side of Central Heights Road between Berkeley Boulevard and Thoroughfare Road. The property was annexed in nineteen eighty-nine, and the site is currently occupied as a non-conforming twenty-six-lot mobile home park. The North Carolina Department of Transportation, as, as we just spoke with regards to the two rezoning requests, will be realigning Central Heights Road at Berkeley Boulevard with Royal Avenue by shifting Central Heights Road to the north side of the railroad. These improvements will also extend Fallon Boulevard to the south and Oak Forest Road to the north. The extension of Oak Forest Road to the north results in a right-of-way acquisition through the existing non-conforming mobile home park, resulting in the loss of fifteen units. Because of the road improvements, the applicant's requesting the relocation of two existing mobile home units and the placement of a new mobile home within the non-conforming mobile home park. Per the city's Unified Development Ordinance, section five point six point ten, non-conforming manufactured home parks, and section five point three point three point three, building design standards adopted in April of two thousand and five, the relocation of the existing units and placement of the new mobile home would increase the nonconformity of the property. The applicant is requesting the following modifications due to the road improvements. Modification of manufactured home park standards regarding non-conforming mobile home parks that have less than eighty percent occupancy rate shall cease operation within a hundred and eighty days and be brought into compliance with city zoning standards. A modification of the building design standards for the relocation of two existing units with regards to roof pitch, exterior siding, visible rust, permanent foundation, and placement along street frontage, which would be in this case parallel. Modification of building design standards for the placement of a new mobile home with regards to permanent foundation and placement along the street, again, which we require parallel to the street. The planning commission at their meeting held on July twenty-ninth recommended approval of the relocation of the two mobile homes and placement of one new mobile home with the modifications. It is recommended by motion to accept the recommendation of the planning commission and approve the site plan modification for the mobile home park with the requested modifications.
Any questions? Alright, we'll move to item K, S six nineteen, Goldsboro Business Park.
S six nineteen is Goldsboro Business Park. This is a preliminary subdivision plat. The property is located on the east side of Paitown Road between Alpha Court and Industry Court. The property does have frontage on both Paitown Road and Eleventh Street, and is approximately a hundred and eight acres. The subdivision is a total lots of seventeen, and the property is zoned I two general industry or industrial. As you can see in your agenda packets, there are seventeen lots, and they range anywhere from roughly four to five acres, with the smallest lot being lot number fourteen, which is two point eight six. The property was rezoned from R sixteen residential to I two general industry by city council in two thousand and eighteen. And the submitted seventeen-lot preliminary subdivision plat shows two points of ingress and egress. The main entrance is located off Paitown Road, with a secondary entrance located off Eleventh Street. Both entrance drives will contain sixty-foot right-of-ways with a thirty-five-foot wide paved surface. Staff is working with the developer regarding street names, and streets will be designed in accordance with the city and NCDOT standards. The developer shall obtain approval for entrance driveways through NCDOT and the city of Goldsboro. Sidewalks are shown along one side of the interior street, streets throughout the development, and the sidewalks are not shown along Paitown Road or Eleventh Street, and are not indicated as a recommended pedestrian facility on the twenty forty recommended pedestrian facilities map. Developer is requesting a modification of the fee in lieu of sidewalk installation along Paitown Road and Eleventh Street in the amount of thirteen thousand seven hundred and eighty-eight dollars. Water and sewer capacity is available to serve the subject property. An agreement is in place with the developer and the city of Goldsboro regarding extension of water and sewer lines to serve the property. Stormwater calculations for the site are being reviewed by the city's engineering department for compliance with the city's ordinances. Required landscaping buffers have been indicated on the preliminary subdivision plat. Street trees, vehicular surface area landscaping, and buffering standards will be addressed by individual site plans for each lot at the time of development. The planning commission at their meeting held on July twenty-ninth recommended approval of the seventeen-lot preliminary subdivision plat with a modification of the sidewalk fee in lieu in the amount of thirteen thousand seven hundred and eighty-eight dollars. It is recommended by motion to accept the recommendation of the planning commission and approve the seventeen-lot preliminary subdivision plat with the sidewalk modification. Any questions?
Alright, thank you, Jeffrey. With that, we got item L, Goldsboro Wayne Transhae Story Board Reappointment.
Yes, sir, it is recommended that Mr. Bob Waller be appointed to a fifth consecutive one-year term.
Alright, any questions?
No, we just have a discussion pertaining to that. I know we're talking about Mr. Bob Waller, but we now have a vacancy. Mark Stevens, he sat on that board, and now it's a vacancy there, so I think we should discuss that as well.
Okay, we can put that on the agenda for the next meeting?
Sure.
Alright, you got that, Ms. Wilson? Okay. Alright, so with that, we have the consent agenda ready for adoption, minus items C and items F, which we have voted to take off and vote on at the next meeting, or bring it to the next meeting. And then item E, we have moved down for individual action. So under item E, it was where our engineer Marty had asked for us to deny the contract for the six hundred and nine thousand for the two thousand eighteen street paving improvements. So is there a motion to do that? To move. Any discussion? Is that a good motion, good second? All favors say aye, or raise your right hand? Opposed likewise? I think the motion carried. It carried, okay. Alright. Alright, so does that, next we have the city manager's report? Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, 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 we need to approve the consent agenda, I'm sorry, forgive me. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Consent agenda. I make a motion that we adopt it with the exception of item E and, what's the second one?
C, C, F, and E.
C, F, and E.
Is there a second? Second. Roll call?
Mayor Allen.
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor Fretton Brown.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Williams.
No.
Councilmember Foster.
No, ma'am.
Councilmember Haynes.
Yes.
Councilmember Aka.
Yes. Alright, consent agenda is approved, we've done items requiring individual action, and now we're at city manager's report.
Nothing to add, sir.
Alright, mayor and councilmember, the first thing is I have the National Night Out proclamation, which I'd just like to read real quick. It's the thirty-sixth Annual National Night Out proclamation. Whereas the National Association of Town Watch is sponsoring a unique nationwide crime and drug prevention program on August sixth, two thousand nineteen, called National Night Out. The thirty-sixth Annual National Night Out provides a unique opportunity for the city of Goldsboro to join forces with thousands of other communities across the country in promoting cooperative police, community, crime, and drug prevention efforts. The city of Goldsboro plays a vital role in assisting the Goldsboro Police Department, the Wayne County Sheriff's Department, through joint crime and drug prevention efforts in the city and county supporting National Night Out two thousand nineteen locally. It is essential that all citizens of the city of Goldsboro be aware of the importance of crime prevention programs and the impact their participation can have on reducing crime and drug abuse in Goldsboro and Wayne County. Whereas police, community partnerships, neighborhood safety, and awareness and cooperation are important things in National Night Out programs. Therefore, I, Chuck Allen, Mayor of City of Goldsboro, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, August sixth, two thousand nineteen, as the thirty-sixth National Night Out. In the city of Goldsboro, North Carolina, and call upon all our citizens of the city of Goldsboro and the county to join the National Association of Town Watch in supporting this thirty-sixth Annual National Night Out tomorrow night. And so I do want to say it starts at five thirty. This is a really good event that Long Earth and others put on. We usually have a really good turnout. Looks like the weather's gonna be good tomorrow night, so I would encourage all our citizens to come out and be a part of this. With that, we'll go to council member comments, and we'll start with, Councilmember Aka?
Just wanna remind people that schools can start back next week or so, and that there are several drives going out for, for school supplies. And if you're able to, to purchase some of these supplies and get them to some of these agencies that are collecting them. that are collecting them, it would be most helpful for our students.
Okay. Comment? Ms. Foster?
Oh, no comment.
Ms. Foster?
The only comment is to support the National Night Out tomorrow night. It's a big event, a lot of people go to a lot of trouble. It's a good time to, uh, people to, to meet our police force and the Sheriff's Department. That's all I have, sir.
Alright, Ms. Williams?
Um, I just wanted to, um, acknowledge Councilman Stevens. Um, we didn't always get along, but, you know, I still appreciate his service to the city. Um, he'll be missed in some ways, he definitely will be missed. Um, I wish him good luck, you know, with his endeavors, and that's all I have.
Alright. I do want to thank you, ma'am. We had two really good things. Uh, one is the, uh, the, the new teachers. We have a lot of new teachers coming into Wayne County, um, to the school system, about a hundred and thirty of them. I got the opportunity to welcome them. But better than that, the Chamber had a scavenger hunt downtown, and we had a hundred and thirty teachers just going all over downtown. It looked like a great morning. Uh, several of our Chamber members downtown participated, I think Councilmember Williams, you participated?
Yes, I did.
I think it was a really good event from all, all accounts. So, I want to welcome our teachers, I want to encourage all our citizens to welcome our teachers and do everything we can to make Wayne County teacher-friendly. But, uh, most of all, I want to thank the Chamber for their efforts and our local downtown businesses, the Chamber members for doing that, because it was a great, great event, and all kinds of T-shirts going on downtown that morning. And then, secondly, I want to just follow up on what Councilmember Williams just said about, uh, Councilmember Stevens' resignation. As most of you know, in our last meeting, he verbally resigned. Our policy, our ordinance says he's got to resign in writing, and we have to accept that. Uh, that happened today. He gave us his resignation in writing today. At our five o'clock meeting, the council, um, voted to accept his resignation, so he is officially resigned now. And then at our next meeting, we'll have discussions on what we have to do to replace him, not replace him, whatever, whatever it's gonna be. Uh, so just so that everybody knows where that is. Uh, with that, we thank you, everybody, for coming, and we stand adjourned.